You know, they give you a tax receipt and all of that. Oh, yes. Yeah, the maple. Well, I can get you. I can put you in touch with it. They can answer that question real quick. There's a local guy. There's a local guy. Well, he's a good friend of mine. He does about fifty, two jerk fours. He was an athletic director.
Did you all see that email from Phil about the sewer? I didn't respond to it. Did you?
No, I just saw it today.
That's why you saw it. Yeah, I just saw it today too. I don't know when it came in, but I just happened, I was sending through my emails. Finally, I saw this.
Well.
Apple says it's seven oh one.
You can take some good name. Replace.
Apple says it's seven oh one, so.
Jacobs.
Here.
Lund.
Here.
Watts.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Johnston.
Here.
All right. Approval of the minutes?
Move to approve.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Lund.
Abstain.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Adoption of the agenda?
I'd like to move to amend the agenda. We have Carl Kramer from the Base Community Council as other business. I think he'll be brief and there's no reason to make him wait for the entire end of the meeting. So I recommend we move him to very first item on the agenda to save him some time so we can drive back to the city.
Okay. Jacobs.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Presentation from Matthew.
Are we going with that or are we moving? Did you want to move him before that?
Up to you.
Carl?
Can I move him first?
Go for it, yeah.
We'll send you the bill.
All right, very good. Well, good evening to you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to City Council this evening. Again, my name is Carl Kramer, President of Base Community Council at Whiteman. And one of the initiatives that's important for us in relation to communication is the community element of Whiteman Air Force Base Community Council. Of the members of which the City of Warrensburg, based on the efforts of Suzanne through the Chamber and then others, Dr. Patrick and then Casey are served on our board. The ability for the communities to really understand the why is really what is really intent with me right now to make sure that as generations, as young to old, move into communities of the eighteen communities that make up Base Community Council, it's important to always have that live conversation about what is the why? Why is it sustainable for Whiteman Air Force Base to be connected to our communities? And how do we give back to the airmen and their families through our communities? And the good thing with the City of Warrensburg is you have not only the most members of Base Community Council that are active, so congratulations and thank you for the efforts from the City of Warrensburg. But you also have the greatest number of retirees, over seven hundred, that call your community home. So it's a reciprocal investment to where the airmen that are active or reserve or guard that call Whiteman home or call communities home off base. It's a reciprocal investment economic impact for the City of Warrensburg and the fifty mile radius. When you look at the overall investment of economic impact, well over six hundred and sixty million dollar annual economic impact of fifty mile radius around down North Missouri. So again, the benefit to our communities is reciprocal as we give back time and treasure. It's a matter of the impact to our communities that the sustainability of the base. Now, with the Air Force already identifying the fact that B-21 Raider will have a spot at Whiteman Air Force Base, never gives the folks with like Whiteman Air Leadership Council the ability to sit back, to be all be comfortable that we're always going to have Whiteman Air Force Base in our backyard. But with the B-21 Raider going to be coming to Whiteman, it gives the sustainability of that base and its ongoing economic impact. So when we look at the connection with our communities, that's where our role is. Again, those eighteen communities, Warrensburg is one of those key communities that we engage with airmen on base and off base. And one of the elements that we're continuing to do, we had a very pretty innovative fundraiser yesterday through the Missouri State Fair, which several of you were able to participate in, which I appreciate. We want to find ways that we fund how we execute our support of airmen and their families on base. And it's from whether it's General Nichols or who will come after him or who had been before him. Indifferent from base leadership, it's important to stay core to what are those, you know, ongoing needs for airmen and their families on base. So one, two of those things that we're doing that I wanted to highlight this evening is the Adopt an Airmen program. Adopt an Airmen program is we're community members, so yes, you know, we want to support the airmen and the families on base. We go through a vetting process as do the airmen to match up interests. And that airmen, young airmen, usually, you know, security forces in some cases, but not always, that maybe it's their first time away from home, we pair that airmen with a family member to go to their home for fishing or some way they can disconnect physically, mentally from their daily mission. When they return to work, they're a much stronger airman. And that's what is the main goal for all the things we do. But one thing that we've also added some more intent to, it started last year, is airmen home for the holidays. We had six airmen, three for Puerto Rico, Texas, West Virginia, and Florida, where we sent these young airmen home as identified by their supervisors. Home for the holidays, as the name suggests, to where they celebrated Christmas with their loved ones. And then, again, that disconnection from their daily mission to go which would then be returning to base, a stronger airmen is how they serve. So those, those things take funding. We do things like we did yesterday with Missouri State Fair and other innovative ways that we can find ways to generate money to serve the airmen because what we do sometimes is small, whether it's cookies or sending people home for the holidays. It's the small things that make the biggest difference for the airmen and the families with their life to serve. So if there is consideration for City Council for any funding at some point for Base Community Council, we think it'd be a relevant cause for that consideration and we'll be open for further discussion later on for any consideration. So again, my conversation with you this evening is just to make sure that all of us continue to understand the why and the sustainability of the base and how it impacts us through just being a patriot, being a good community partner, but then even more so the economic impact in many facets to our communities. So thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. If there's any questions, I can address those. If not.
Can I just give a props to Base Community Council? I've worked many deployments where the airmen from the 442nd are returning home in the middle of the night and one and two in the morning, you guys are always there to welcome them back, so.
Well, we're doing our best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Matthew?
So I placed before you the few notes to go over that'll go with the slide. The, the actual presentation is something happening with the, with the link, so that's what we have as of now. I'm waiting for the presentation.
Just while we're waiting, just to educate the public and remind the council that this is just one step in our process and this is a draft. There's definitely still time for council to make any changes as you see fit and with the public requests. Going forward, our goal is to hopefully have this approved by, I think, the end of September at the latest. So staff has taken all of this, the input of the council, the strategic sessions, the input of the, of different departments as far as priorities, et cetera. All of it is now reflected in the draft budget in accordance with the revenue projections that Matthew has created for us and those types of things. So anyway, we're up and running. I just wanted to give a brief reminder, this is just a draft format at this point. Council's not approving this tonight, but there's still some time to make some changes and tweaks if you feel necessary.
Yeah, we'll, we'll plan on having the first reading the next council meeting. Okay. A few council meetings ago, we amended the expenditure policy for the city and so the new, the new policy states that the current operating expenditures and expenses will not exceed current operating revenues plus fifty percent of the undercover balance less any deficit estimated for the beginning of the budget year. And so what that means is if the reserve is met, the city can use up to half of that unrestricted reserve to balance the budget. Let's take a look at the current year picture. We, when we budgeted for the 2018, we knew we would have a large deficit due to the GO bond funds being received in fiscal year seventeen, and then we expensed those funds in eighteen. So that's why you have the big five million dollar deficit there. So far, we've spent a little over half those funds and we'll have a portion of those funds expensed in FY19 as well. This contributed to the FY18 expenses being down by twenty-six percent as you can see here. The proposed FY19 budget has a deficit of about two point six million dollars. One point six lies with the GO bond fund, again, with the remaining spread across general fund and the CIP and WPC. And also, in this year's budget, we've included the self-insurance fund, which wasn't included last year. And that is the fund that pays for the employees' portion of the insurance. And so the, the proposed budget. Here, we have a list of the restricted fund balances for FY18, or FY19, I'm sorry, which includes a hundred and seventy-four thousand for Business Park and five hundred and twenty thousand to help with the Hawthorne debt payments. In total, we have around nine hundred thousand in restricted funds. The restricted reserve will be about two point two million, leaving the city with an unrestricted balance of about a million dollars for fiscal year nineteen. And so going back to our expenditure policy, council now has authority to use half of that one million to budget the FY19, to balance FY19 budget if needed or if you see fit. The FY19 outlook has a general fund ending with a deficit of about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. This uses about half of that expenditure, half of the expenditure policy unrestricted balance for budgeting. Staff budgeted a two percent increase in income and in expenses for FY19. So here are some of the major items that are budgeted in the FY19 budget. These items total about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We have a part-time municipal court bailiff, HR assistant that'll be split with parks, GIS coordinator, which is a new position, two street department work trucks, and then a truck with a plow and sander. And then the community funding sits at a hundred and, that's actually supposed to be a hundred and seventy-five thousand. We had a ten thousand dollar grant in there as well. So here are the community funding requests. We got the Big Brothers and Big Sisters, Burfords, Chamber, Diversity Inclusion Commission, which is a new one this year, the JC EDC, and Oats round out this slide. And then we have Pioneer Trails, Tree Board, and there's your ten thousand dollar grant, which will bring it down to a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Depot at ten thousand, five thousand of that was added in the last month or so to remove the paint, the lead paint from the building. Then Historic Preservation, Main Street, Whiteman Area Leadership Council, and if you choose to fund anything for the Base Community Council, it will be included as well. Items not funded in the FY19 budget are as follows. Some of the bigger ticket items, the patrol vehicle, the cameras for the patrol vehicles at ninety thousand. The firefighter specialist, forty hours, fifty-two thousand as a hourly position. And then two of the, two of the larger ones was a truck with a sander and plow, a hundred and fifty thousand. And then the street sweeper at two hundred and seventy thousand. So the street sweeper request came in late because of a repair that's needed to the current street sweeper, and that repair is going to be about fifteen thousand dollars. So staff would like some guidance from council. If you would want to pay that fifteen thousand to get it running, it's not guaranteed that it would, it would get the sweeper back up to par. Or we could look into funding the request for two hundred and seventy, and we can look into some alternative funding methods for that, maybe a lease or a loan or something like that to pay for the street sweeper.
Can we put a governor on it so he doesn't have to go really fast?
No.
Sometimes he really flies down the street. I'm just kidding.
Okay, so the, the CIP fund looks to have an end to balance around four hundred thousand. That all lies within the transportation fund as the CIP, as the half cent, I think will have a negative balance. A few years ago, council put in place a two hundred thousand dollar reserve in the CIP. So this budget honors that commitment with the combined total being four hundred thousand dollars. Here are some of the capital expenditures in the transportation, the annual street maintenance program. We try to increase that each year about ten thousand dollars to, to get a few more miles of road for streets. Downtown revitalization phase four. We do not think that we will have all, well, we won't have all of that done this year and so it won't be paid for in fiscal year eighteen, which where it was budgeted. So we'll have to move some of that money into FY19. The curb and sidewalk program, striping from Maguire and Young Street, the bike trail, and then the right turn lane debt payment. That, this is the final payment here, fifteen thousand dollars, so we won't have to worry about that after nineteen.
How long have we been paying on that?
I think it was a six-year agreement. Five-year, okay. Five-year agreement, so it's finally coming to an end. So the half-cent projects include the fire truck debt service and the CIPs for the building and a couple of the city buildings. Intergovernmental Services, which is the administration for the CIP, it goes back to the general fund. Storm prepared for the Northfield subdivision, about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's the big one this year. And then we're going to put back a hundred thousand dollars for emergency repairs. We have the door security, security and video surveillance for the City Hall building. And parks will be included in that as well. And I think we're going to try to get the street forum in as well with that. We have some money that will transfer from eighteen to nineteen to also cover that. So that, that total project will be, we will have available about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, even though we don't think it'll cost that much to fund that project. Fire station two, the roof driveway and ramp repairs is also in there. And then IT, a couple of IT items. Okay, the NID holds the debt to the Hawthorne, which is expected to have a beginning balance of three hundred and seventy thousand dollars in FY19. If the city does not pay any of the Hawthorne, does not sell any of the Hawthorne land in FY19, we'll be looking at a any cash balance of about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. This is in no way is a good position to be in, but if we, if the income remains the same, FY20 will be the last year we will be able to pay the debt payments on those. So we're looking about, we're about two years away from paying the debt payments for the NID.
Any ideas after two years, if we don't sell any properties?
What'd you say?
Any idea what, if we get to that two-year point and none of the properties are sold, how we'll make the payments?
Well, we've put a hundred and, what is it, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars back already.
Yeah.
So we do have that much. We have, we didn't add to that this year, but we always have the choice to add to that, that balance next year or the year before. Or if you want to add it in that you're budget. Like I said in the previous slides, we're using two hundred and sixty thousand dollars of the five hundred thousand. So you do have the opportunity to use five hundred thousand dollars to balance the budget if you would like. So that will be a decision that, that council as a whole will make. Oh, and the, the WPC, these numbers, the numbers in the, in the budget are based on what we just, what we talked about last council meeting on the twenty-third and that increase of, I think it was a five percent increase of the rates, base rates. Okay, so do you guys have any questions or are you comfortable with what's proposed in the budget so far? Is there any projects or anything that you would like to see added to the budget?
Do we still have money in the industrial parks that we had set aside for trying to get that up and running?
Yes, we got a hundred and seventy-four thousand, I believe.
Do we still need to keep that in there since we've done all the upgrades and expansions and stuff that?
We don't know what any potential future requests may be. Obviously, it's always at the discretion of the council. If you want to repurpose that money, you can. But that isn't to say that someone else doesn't come in and want to go east a dollar tree and make a request for economic incentives. Could be extending a water line or a natural gas mine or anything like that, that if we wipe out that funding, we will have to figure out a way to pay for that, whereas right now we have at least some money there to help pay for that. I would recommend that it stay there if possible, at least for another year or so. And then reconsider in the future if it looks like it's developing without any needed consent from the city in the future.
Where are we at with the self-funding of our employee healthcare?
We're sitting at around eight hundred thousand dollars right now. It looks to gain around two hundred thousand dollars again in FY19, which puts us in a good position. What we're doing now is like a hybrid fund of a fully self-insured and a, and a. Yeah, and so the, what we've been directed by our. Yeah, our advisors is that we should probably stay with what we're doing right now for, for a little while longer because it's working. We are able to put some money back and be able to do other things with that money.
We'll get the, the reserve for that to about one million, one point two million. That we can take on the risk of going full self-insured. We're getting close.
Yeah, we are really close.
Eight hundred thousand and now, just over a matter of, you know, two or three years. That's, that's pretty significant progress. So we're close. Hopefully that means that we'll be able to save some additional costs for employees with regards to healthcare in the future once we go to fully self-insure.
Yeah, if we, if we can keep those healthcare prices level with no increase, I think that's always doing a solid for your employees.
I also want to highlight that it wasn't included in the presentation, but we've talked about it several times. And this budget does include the full implementation of the recommendations of the wage and benefits study for employees.
Yes, that's true.
Of bringing all, all those results up to the fiftieth percentile across the board and fixing some compression issues and those types of things. So that is included and built into this budget fully at this time, which did make it a bit tighter, which increased the amount of the projects in the unfunded list, but that's because we made that a priority in this budget.
Good.
And so that, that is most of your two percent increase was due to that. We, we cut out a lot of capital projects this year and trimmed a lot of fat to get those, those increases in.
And we need to keep our good people.
Yeah. I just keep everybody happy.
When we say fully self-funded for our insurance, what is, I mean, is that kind of like an HSA type thing? Or what's, what exactly does that mean?
We would basically be paying out the claims for the employees.
Basically what it means is as an employer, we take on more risk for, for claims versus the insurance company doing that. And the more risk you take on, the lower the premiums you pay. And so we have to have a good reserve in there because we don't know what, what the claim history is going to be that year. So you want to have a certain period of time of claims to have in reserve so in case you have a really bad year, you don't start bouncing checks or affecting the general fund significantly because you're paying out really expensive claims. Which is why our advisors have recommended that with the organization our size and our employees and the makeup of our, of our employee pool, that one million to one point two million in reserves is, is a, is where we need to be to go fully self-insured and feel like we can run that comfortably. And then that drives down the cost of the premiums. So you basically have three different options to provide health insurance. What the city had been doing before I got here is we provided a fully self-insured, or a fully insured program. So we, we basically left all of the risk on the insurance company, which then you pay higher premiums because they're taking on that risk of what your claim issue could be. So you may pay a million dollars a year for that fully funded insurance, but they may pay out one point five million in claims. Versus the other way, the fully self-insured, we take on that risk and we get, and then we buy an insurance rider in there that caps what our maximum exposure is. But by doing those mechanisms, it really drives down and helps us control the cost of our healthcare and helps stabilize it out for the future. So I might still be talking apples and oranges or I might still be confused, but in a nutshell, that's kind of insurance one-on-one for employees.
So we have a, so we have a ceiling, and once we hit that ceiling, then we have insurance that kicks in too.
In the worst-case scenario, you would first write that you would be responsible for claims up to, let's say, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a twelve-month period. And if we have, if we have claims that year of nine hundred thousand, that rider is going to kick in. We'll pay the first seven hundred and fifty thousand, but then we'll pay the additional hundred and fifty thousand, you know, now. But by doing that, it really drives it down, whereas a fully insured, the insurance company is taking all that on. We have no responsibility to pay any claims or anything. We just pay premiums and then they, they pay all that on the back end. But that's the most expensive way to provide out insurance to employees.
We've had some really good experience over the past two or three years too. And that's why our rates are low right now and we're able to keep them low. And this year, we, we hope to have the same rates as last year. That's what we budget anyway in the budget. I think any, anything over the rates or anything over the price that we paid for insurance last year, I think it would be able to be taken care of within the self-insurance fund.
So along with that, when you do the fully insured, let's say that we had a year where we paid a million dollars in health insurance premium, but we only had seven hundred and fifty thousand in claims. So what's the difference of a quarter million dollars? That stays with the insurance company. You don't give any of that back to them.
Right.
They pocket that. Versus this way, we can do this and we, we budget to pay out a certain amount of claims. Versus this way, we can do this and we, we budget to pay out a certain amount of claims a year, but if it comes in less than that, it goes into our reserves and we can use that to continue to help drive down the cost of insurance or potentially return that to our employees. So instead of the insurance company keeping it as a profit, we put it to work for us to make, make insurance better for our employees and more affordable. And, and that's the difference between a fully insured versus a self-insured program. We take on a lot of risk, but also by taking on that risk when we have these good years, we can really make that work to our benefit.
You also have a couple of other things that you might add. Essentially, what expenses that you have that you're paying for going forward in that is simply the, the claims adjustment expense of the company instead of paying for all of the administrative expenses and everything else that go along with that, plus there are other options that come along with that in terms of, of protecting the pool that you have going forward. You can have a, a large risk reinsurance program or you can also cap it on an individual loss basis and buy reinsurance on that, which also is, is helps you keep your, your risk down.
Long story short, we're watching it and we're trying to make it work the best we can for us as employers, but also for employees. From the employer perspective, as far as the doctors have access to, that, none of that changes. The, the provider network is the same whether it's fully insured or self-insured. And the copays and those types of things are all how we set it up, but what we pay to provide that insurance changes drastically depending on whether you're fully insured or a hybrid or a self-insured program.
But this will also allow us to address those copays and hold those steady.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Matthew, you mentioned you're looking, or that staff is looking for direction on the street sweeper?
Yes.
Um, how old is it?
Five years, is it?
Yeah, oh, six years old.
How long?
Situation went wrong with, we had a unit of key equipment, which was the vendor for the unit, tongue, body. There was some hydraulic issues with it. They're saying that hydraulic valve body was bad in it, got a crack. So some functionality of the sweeper is not what it should be. Repair that piece, fifteen thousand dollars and just replace that valve body. Comes down to a point, three to five years generally their lifespan.
Yeah, thirty-five years of lifespan on the street sweeper.
So in terms of, as a matter of economics, do we skip fifteen thousand dollars on a unit that has, that's been used in life? Or do we, oh, we have, we have had it on plan and are replacing that to try to get this thing replaced with new. This is what the company, I don't know, could also get another year of the unit. This is just going that way.
And so the, the, the street sweeper along with, with any other, other unfunded items are, I mean, that, those are items that you can all decide on if you wanna put back into the budget, leave them out, or just give staff some kind of direction on them.
Are we, I notice on the unfunded there, we've got a firefighter specialist and a police officer. Are we working, are there, are those additional spots that we added or are we working shorthanded?
That, we're just raising a spot that until about three weeks ago, I hadn't been able to fill. And so if things are better next year, then we may be able to fill it. If not, they would just stay unfilled, but it will not affect service delivery.
Now, my, it's an additional position to help with, to cut back on overtime. Our part-time staff, which is more or less paid on call volunteer type volunteerism is down across the board in the United States. We're down to presently four of twenty-four part-time slots available. We have four more we're getting ready to put on and that's all that we have been hoping for, for a while. It's just hard to get anybody to come in and do that right now.
Is this the position you asked for last year?
Yes.
So this is an additional one or it was not? I'm trying to remember.
This is a, this is a, a change from the one last year was three positions to add an extra person per shift. This is an attempt, because the expense was smaller here, to put a forty-hour person on during the daytime, which is the hardest time to fill in and try to see if we could hit it that way.
So the two thousand and eighteen, the three positions, were they, they were all part-time positions?
No, they were all full-time.
Did they get filled?
No.
We didn't budget to fill those, so those positions.
That was what I'm trying to remember.
Higher door filled.
Yeah, it was an expense of around a hundred and fifty-some thousand dollars.
Got it.
So the twenty-three thousand electric motorcycle? Just asking.
Unless you got a check to write.
Well, it's items unfunded, so I didn't know, I mean, we don't have one, right?
Right.
So something that's on your wish list or something, kinda like their taser. I had to throw that in there, sorry. So those might be good like around the fair times or things that cars can't get, right? Okay, just asking.
And then the patrol video cameras or dash cams?
Yeah, dash cams and body cams.
And body cams?
For that ninety thousand?
And on your presentation there, you were talking about cameras for the buildings. You had fifty thousand, but I know when we did our tour, the police chief was trying to put in, is that?
Yeah.
Do we need to add to that fifty? Is that part of that fifty?
That's part of, yeah, that's included.
Those are the building security.
Okay.
It's included the, I know during the tour.
Right.
You talked about the evidence room, that, that's included in?
I think it's.
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay.
That would be my highest priority.
Yeah, yeah.
If it had a limit, we had any of the front and the evidence recovered, yes.
Okay.
What we took from the IT department was the essential needs of the city was been identified by the different departments and tried to do these two buildings and some of the parks first, that is a high priorities that need to be covered. Areas like his evidence room, his Sally's port, booking areas, front end of city hall, the grounds around the buildings for liability purposes and some over parts.
As long as it's video cameras, it's also upgrading the actual software for the security systems of the door entries. All of that is included in that price point that's, and builds into the budget right now.
One last question on the firefighter position. Do you know how much you're currently paying out in overtime?
Right now, we're twenty-one percent over budget for overtime this year. We're at a hundred and forty-one thousand. This is rather unusual this year for that because of the part-time though. In the past, we traditionally tried to fill with the part-time firefighters, but due to not having them, we're just having to fill with overtime because we don't have extra people on during the days. It's a minimal amount of people every day.
And how much would you foresee that going down by having this position?
We're estimating it would stay within budget at about a hundred and one hundred and two thousand.
Oh, so then it could actually go over by having a position?
We're just trying to nail it down a little bit.
So the position says it's about twenty thousand dollars.
Well, it doesn't sound like it. Cause, yeah.
We're over a hundred and forty-five thousand now. We dropped down to about a hundred and one thousand is a guess of what we're doing by pulling eight hours a day.
Right, but the position is fifty-two.
Right.
So it would actually cost.
It wouldn't kill all your.
Well, right, it would cost, I'm just saying that, that taking those numbers down would
It's just reducing it, it's not, it's not a full fix to the problem.
Sure, just more reliable maybe.
Depends on what the year-end overtime total is. And now we're at over budget, a hundred and forty-one thousand, but we still have a few months to go.
Yeah.
So that number's just gonna keep going up versus, you know, with the position, you know, we could move the pleasure for overtime down to around a hundred thousand. You're talking a hundred and fifty thousand. Cars are almost at that point now with a few months to go. We could, we may finish out at a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety thousand this year in overtime by the end of the year.
Basically, you're trading out full-time positions for that overtime.
Well, yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out, if you're actually trading it out or if it's a?
It's, it's not a whole wash. The three positions, we drop it down to probably under forty thousand dollars a year. The one position is more of trying to hold it within the budgeted amount annually and being able to fill the hardest times to fill during daytime.
Well, if you're having trouble filling them, there's also, has to be some unquantified impacts on, on the people as well.
Oh, hell, we've had to, this year, we've had to what we call mandatory overtime.
Right.
We've had to hold people over mandatorily more times than we have in the last five years.
And it's hard to quantify that in numbers here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've worked, I've worked the command truck a couple of times this year already because we just needed bodies.
Right.
So camp, council to give you direction, how much money can we spend?
You basically give two hundred and fifty thousand dollars based on your recommendation to allow staff to spend fifty percent of the unrestricted reserve, which right now sits at about a million dollars.
Budget to go into that almost accordingly in this year.
But you have to keep in mind as well that as you spend more money in expenditures, your twenty-two percent reserve gets higher. So it might be five hundred thousand now, but if you spend, I don't know if you put two hundred thousand dollars more into the budget, it's gonna bring your restricted reserve up and then unrestricted reserve down, so.
I would also strongly caution against using unrestricted reserves, which is pretty much a one-time expenditure to put long-term expenditures into the budget.
Right.
Yeah.
And you can't do that, but I would strongly caution against it.
Have you got any good news?
There's taxes up.
There's always that.
It's good, thank you.
So you're looking for some direction kind of now on where to go with this?
Yeah.
So we have, we've proposed a recommended budget that does go in the reserves about two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty thousand. The question is whether you wanna make any changes or tweaks to that. I know the council previously had talked about wanting to discuss what we spend in community funding. Or do you wanna add things in the budget, consider going even deeper into the unrestricted reserve or is what staff has proposed enough of a financial step this fiscal year that that's the budget, budget you wanna move forward with?
Have we got enough time to have the meetings that, that are currently on the calendar before we make any?
So, so what, what we kinda planned was for the first reading to be at the next council meeting, that the second reading of the budget would not have to happen until the second meeting in September. So as long as we have the budget approved by the second meeting in September, we'll be fine.
Yeah, about a month, month and a half.
Wasn't there something in one of our meetings, maybe I'm getting myself confused, that we weren't getting the ten thousand dollar grant for the trees? Did I misunderstood that?
I think it, I think we're not.
We're not, okay.
So that, that will come down to the two thousand dollars. So it's, it's a wash, it's a wash anyway, either way it goes.
Chief Lockhart on here, the patrol video cameras. So you said that includes dash cams and body cams?
Right.
And while I think both of those are awesome.
Very important.
Extremely. I know a lot of the officers I know think the dash cams are an absolute necessity and the body cams are really helpful. Would you, is there a separate quote just for dash cams or is that something you would advise against or?
There's two trainings of thought here. So on a dash cam, what you're gonna capture is what happens right in front of the car and around the car. We have a lot of calls that take place away from that area and so most of the systems right now integrate with one another. Body cameras are only probably about three, four hundred bucks a piece, so you don't save a lot of money with that. If you're buying a whole system together, the, the hardware for the dash cam is expensive and then the software to download all the video onto your server is expensive and then the servers themselves. So they really work well together. If you could only do one, dash cams probably is the better option because you get your high liability, things are auto crashes and car stops when you end up getting in fights of people right in front of your car, so you're gonna capture most of that. But, so I mean, if you had to pick one, dash cam would be it, but you're not talking about that much more of an expense to add body cams to it and then you got everything.
I don't, highway patrol does not have body cams, right? I think they just have dash cams in Missouri.
I think you're probably right, but about their mission, it's mostly roadside.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So for us, we're not mostly roadside. We're roadside, but we're also away from the road.
Sure.
People's houses and things like that. UCM has body cams, they do not have dash cam, mostly because most of their interactions are away from the car.
Sure.
The sheriff's office has some dash cam and some body cam as well. We're really one of the few agencies that doesn't have any kind of video.
Yeah.
It, it's pretty, pretty rare.
Yeah. So do you, by recommendation, do you wanna do some of these meetings first or give some feedback now?
That would be my recommendation if, if we, if we have the time and I understand we do, is to have these meetings that we have on the calendar now and that would give us more information, I think.
So maybe take.
So you're getting nothing.
I know Main Street's the newest meeting.
Uh-huh.
They're the twenty-second and WC, yeah, I think that makes sense.
So you wanna see, basically you wanna see some options on the, the dash cam?
I, I would just be curious, the difference in pricing, it sounds like it's not much, but if we had a little bit to play with here and there.
Yeah. The storage is, is, as I understand it, is, is the biggest expense, isn't it?
What, when you're talking with the area, what we would do is do server-based storage here. Model-based storage is expensive.
Okay.
And it's, but it's, it's not, they're really six, one-half dozen of another except for the expense. We feel like we can do just as good of a job here with server storage. And then the other part of it is your retention period, so you aren't keeping them forever. So you, you get them off the server and you delete them as quickly as you can and so you save space that way as well.
Want to add to the chief's thing, one of the things is some, the most of the softwares, when you buy them together, you don't have to have one software package for the dash cam and one for the body cam. You buy the system that's the same and they both will download and work through the same.
Sure.
And the wifi upgrade the city just did, we've got one in the garage, one upstairs. So as the cars pull in, that video uploads immediately and so there's all of that, backbone's already in place to do that.
I think I'd also like to see how everybody feels about exploring the option on the sweet street sweeper, it's easy for me to say, for a lease.
Lease. I would say lease.
Are there any companies that contract that stuff out that we can hire?
It's some kind of.
Yeah, there, there are some that contracted out. We have an in-town bank that gives us good rates on leases as well, so I'll, I'll look into that.
Okay.
What's the side panel speed control? Explain, please.
That's basically controls mattresses, roof speed to what the sander putting out on the truck, that's for the pattern.
I kind of thought something like that, but I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, so we're looking at lease options, potential lease options for street sweeper and then possibility of if you were to have to split dash cams and body cams. I don't want it to be a lot of extra work, I'm just curious.
No, it's not at all. I get a quote from the rep and forget it.
Anybody else?
How many vehicles, how many patrol vehicles are we replacing for a hundred and five thousand?
Uh, that would be three.
Three. Yeah, first time I looked at it, I missed the S at the end of that. I figured I'd ask you what vehicle we buying for a hundred and five thousand dollars.
They're about thirty-five thousand dollars a piece.
Well, a lot of it, I think when we get to these part-time and full-times, they're kind of now employees and insurance and all that too, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not saying we don't need them, don't get me wrong, but I know that those used to be in a different category of ongoing.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? There used to be one-time things and ongoing.
And as the city, as the city grows and we see the revenues kinda stabilize, I think these are positions that'll be essential. You will, we'll have to have those positions.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we have a public hearing to consider sewer rate volume charges for the upcoming fiscal year nineteen budget year by the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
At the last council meeting, we discussed. we discussed. So last council meeting, we discussed the, the new rates for the sewer charges. Currently, our rates are, the fixed rates are eleven fifty for residential users, and then eleven fifty for one inch, one to four inch, fifty-seven fifty for four inch, I'm sorry, eleven fifty for one inch or less, one to four inches, fifty-seven fifty, and anything over four inches is a hundred and thirty-eight dollars, fixed charge for commercial users. And what we, what council decided last council meeting was an increase, to increase those rates for, to thirteen dollars for residential. Thirteen for the up to one, one inch. One to four inch would be sixty-five dollars, and then anything above four inches will be a hundred and fifty-six per month. Council also asked to see what the difference is, or the different choices for the commercial usage. And I think we have those as well, and we have a matter here as well for, for any questions.
Hello?
Hi.
I don't know if you guys wanna go through the whole presentation again, or just the few slides that were added?
I said a few slides that were added.
Yeah.
All the other stuff.
So one of the questions that came up was what the impact on the commercial users was. Matthew went over what the recommendations were for an increase in the fixed charge. A little too far. So, so what we did is, we went and looked at a couple of the average residential commercial users. And one of them was a hotel that used on average a month of two hundred and fifty CCF. And since it's just an increase in the base charge, you're looking at, because of how it's split out, you know, for that one to four inch, it's a two dollar and fifty cent increase annually, or not annually, monthly, that you have. And then the other one we looked at was an average industrial user, which was greater than four inch meter. And that one's a little bit more, it's about a six dollar increase per month. So it's very little impact across the board. And then the other thing that we provided was a look at where the, you know, if you look at an average residential user, where their monthly bill compares to communities around the area. And as you can see from that, you guys are a little less than, than what the average is for, for the communities. Are there any, any additional questions?
Okay, maybe I missed something. Can you go back to the slide, it's a change in price?
I should say it was a six dollar per the different options. I said that wrong earlier, but you're going from, you're looking between the three alternatives, at the low end, it's fourteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-six, and it's fourteen thousand seven hundred and forty-eight at the high-end alternative.
Okay. Okay, I was.
Yeah.
I had the big number in my head, and the, the numbers you had down there, I was like, how can you add thirteen dollars to a bill and only get a five dollar increase?
Yeah.
But now I see, I got you now.
Yeah, it's six, six dollars per.
That's why I said maybe I missed something.
Per increment, yeah, that's, that's me.
There's that new math, and I was quite sure we were doing some new math there.
Anybody have any questions?
Okay.
Okay, we do have a couple signed up for the public hearing, Phil Miller.
My throat will work, work tonight, it hasn't been working lately very well. I'm speaking to encourage the city council to come up with a different proposal to raise the needed money to operate the sewer system. A proposal that does not raise the fixed charge of the sewer bill, but rather the volume charge based on customer usage. The reason I'm making this request is because I believe that raising the fixed charge puts more of a financial burden on those who can afford it the least. Those who are trying to conserve water to save money for other basic needs. A lot of this happened to sewer rates in the last four years, and two thousand fifteen is when they started charging the low users, the people that used very little water, the fixed rate plus the volume charge. Before that, it was if you used two, two units or less, you just paid five dollars a month. So I, I was told, and I'm sure that's true, that five dollars probably didn't even pay for the postage to send out the bill, so it did need to get raised. But that, that was quite a jump for people who were on fixed incomes, it was about ten dollars a month. And my social security that year went up zero percent, so somebody would possibly have to take money from other basic needs. I'm not talking about myself, but I'm talking about somebody on a fixed income with social security. Then at the end of two thousand sixteen, the basic fee went up from nine to eleven fifty, but no change in the usage rates. That was a, for the low units, the two unit users, that was a seventeen percent increase. For the average user, that was about a six percent increase. For somebody that used like twenty units and watering their lawn or whatever they were doing with all that water, it was a little over two percent increase. So you can see that those on the lower end were, were bearing the brunt of the increase, and I think those are the ones least able to afford it. The next, this next increase from eleven fifty to thirteen will be a, about a nine percent increase for the people at the bottom that are using two units. It'll be about a little over three percent for the average user, and it'll be one point four percent for the people that are using a lot of money. So that nine percent, this year I got a, a point nine percent increase in my social security. And those, again, people that are on a fixed income, that's a nine percent versus point nine percent increase in their income. So how can the city gain the needed money for the sewer without raising the fixed charge? Well, one place to start would be the two thousand sixteen recommended schedule that was proposed in two thousand sixteen. And that actually kept the fixed charge of nine dollars up through two thousand twenty-one. And what happened each year was that the volume charge went up. A little bit for the low-usage people, the one and two units, and, and considerably more for those who use more. I'm not exactly sure the history of why that wasn't chosen, because it, it was all mapped out into two thousand twenty-one. And I looked at the amount of money that was gonna be generated by the new system at thirteen dollars that, that you're looking at now, that's been proposed. And that was five hundred, five million forty-nine thousand dollars. And this, this old recommendation actually generated, according to the figures they had here, five million fifty-five thousand dollars. So actually generate more money than raising the fixed, fixed charge that's happening now, so. Anyway, I'm just strongly encouraging you to, to look at the, the volume usage, raising that rather than raising the fixed charge, because I think it, it puts an undue burden on people who are really trying to maybe save money, save water, so that they can have more money to spend for some of their basic needs. So if you have any questions on what I said, I hope I have my figures right. I'd be glad to tell you where I got them, if, if you're interested. Otherwise, I'm done.
I know that was, that in two thousand sixteen, that was a discussion, and I was, and I was actually looking at those numbers. And I think one of the reasons why we lean towards the fixed number more is because of the water efficiency products are being put in houses and stuff. That number was being, the usage numbers were being reduced as we grew, but our expenses were increasing. So I, and I think that those averages, those averages we felt were going to actually drop based on what that two thousand sixteen report had said. I mean, you might be able to.
Well, at last.
I think she did it in two thousand sixteen.
At the last council meeting, at the last council meeting, the minutes say that the revenues appeared to be higher than projected, and approximately twenty more customers were billed and consumption was higher.
I think the, as Brian's saying, that, that, I don't know where she's at, I can't see her.
She's always in the back.
There she is. The, the usage falling and, and the need for some pretty expensive maintenance on both plants looking us in the face is, is driving a lot of this, Phil.
Well, I'm not saying you don't need the money, I'm not saying that at all, I'm just asking you to consider a different way of getting the money
Okay.
that would make it more equitable across the board, so that, you know,
Yes.
goes down to the bottom man, you're paying the same percentage as somebody that's up here a lot further, could probably afford it. You can afford to water your lawn, you probably could afford a little bit more money on your water bill.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Janice, is that right? Janice Russell?
Well, I am one of those fixed income people that Phil's referring to. And I, when I moved back here after living away for thirteen years, I moved back in December, I didn't have a lot of choice in housing, because there was student rentals, and there were the expensive duplexes that have been built all over town. So I am paying six hundred and ninety dollars in rent, that's fifty, five hundred, that's considerably more than I can afford. The low-income housing that I checked out, all of them have got at least a two to five-year wait. So I am in a place that I can't afford, and I can't afford an increase in any of the utilities. I pay twenty-five dollars a month for water, because I don't use a lot of water, and by myself. I pay, but for sewer, I pay sixteen ninety, the same that, that somebody with a three-bedroom house and a vegetable garden pays. So I, that's, I just cannot afford for my bill to be higher. I think you can see the numbers as I've kind of outlined them, right? Um, do you have any questions? I just moved here from Florida, and I have a friend who's just moved here from California. And what I saw happening there was, I was paying more for my water and sewer combination bill, three times more than I was paying FPL for air conditioning in Florida. I'd really hate to see that creep up like that here, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that will close the public hearing. Next, we have a first reading only, ordinance establishing sewer rate volume charges for the fiscal year nineteen budget year in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
So next council meeting, you'll have second reading, you'll take a vote on whether or not you approve or change.
So is there any options that you could do, I'm just asking, for someone that is only using so many cubic feet to keep their flat rates, or we're just gonna need to do raise the thirteen fifty? Any other options?
I mean, the, there would be the option to do the two different rates. The, the only catch in that is the financial system, financial software, having those two different rates in there. But that's, that is an option that the council has.
Could they establish this, I don't know, over the top, but could they establish what your average rate was last year, and then that's your fixed fee for this year, and just reassess it? Or is that like a manual process?
Like someone that's lived in a house for five years, and they're senior citizen, they're in their sixties, early seventies, and they've, they've used this much water for a year. And then now the city's gonna raise the.
So you're talking about maybe doing like a fixed price, a totally fixed?
Is that what you're thinking, what they used last year?
Yeah, I was thinking, um, this is probably a bad example, how Casey P and L can take, you know, all of last year and average out what your bill is.
Oh, do an average.
And then establish that.
Okay.
We're already kind of doing that based on the.
Yeah.
We do three months in the beginning, and then that's your bill for the entire.
Level bill pay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's right, we do, with the, with the three-month average that we do, that is sort of what we do.
Yeah.
You just pay for the volume.
I was just looking at Robin's, you know, thought of, is there a stair stepper option maybe for the fixed, the fixed fee? If you could take an average and then of the year, and then that becomes, I don't want it to be overly complicated, but there's, they bring good points.
Yeah, but, but that's basically what we're doing now, so they do the, the winner average, and it is January, February, March, I believe. And they average out those months with, which are the lowest water usage months on, on record that we have. And they pay that for the year, once that's established.
So theoretically, when we do that, so that way the, the argument is, is that in the summertime when you use water, maybe you're watering your lawn or your garden, that doesn't go into the sewer system to be treated. So we don't bear a cost in treating that water when it hits our system. So we do the January, February, March, because I hope nobody's watering their yard in January or February. But, so you're using the usage of the actual household during that timeframe.
Yeah, it's after the holiday period, so you, I mean, you usually don't have.
So she is right, you know, if, if you have a household, if someone's living in a three-bedroom house and there's a lot of people living in there, the, the cost is gonna be the same. If their usage is the same as, her as a single, she's gonna be paying the same amount as someone who has a three-bedroom house and waters their garden. Because we don't take into account the water used on the garden during the summertime, because that never makes it to our sewer treatment facility. We don't bear the cost of treating that and putting it back in the creek or the river. I, and I appreciate their coming forward, this is a very real issue, I appreciate them giving a voice to it. The challenge though, to the request, is exactly what council member Jacob stated earlier. We've tried the, adjusting the usage rates, and we have not been able to financially stabilize out our revenues to balance our expenditures. And it was only this last year, the first year that we did adjustment to the fixed rate, that we actually made any progress of coming anywhere closer to what we projected.
So we did, we did two years increasing the volume charge, and both years revenue went down. So as, as things get more water efficient, the volume charge is not the thing to use, because the volume of water is be, is decreasing. But we are still seeing a, a volume of sewage go to our plants that needs to be treated. The upgrades, the, what the EPA is, is telling us that we have to do to, to meet standards. It's a lot of cost.
The only other recommendation I can make is you change the fixed rate for the commercial industrial and leave the residential alone. But we have significant more residential users, and that's gonna significantly impact the future revenue doing that.
You, you would probably, you would have to increase commercial substantially, yeah, to, to overcome that increase.
I know Slim, you've given us his numbers before, but what is, what is the cost to operate our plants? And what, what do we have in front of us for expenditures that are repairs that we know is in the pipe?
Well, you know, there's a lot of the system is old clay pipe that we're here in town. That, that infrastructure needs to be aligned on there. And we're basically, we want to get the front row, not tree and rainwater whenever it rains. All of them old clay pipes are allowing moisture to penetrate into them. Manholes, many of them, large recens of manholes were brick manholes. They, they allow water to get into those, so sealing up. We did a full study of our inflow infiltration throughout our whole system in the community years ago. You know, we looked at the dollars it's gonna cost to, to improve and correct those things that we had wrong with the system. And that's what, you know, some of this money is going towards. Our plants, with the growth we have on the east part of town that we all perceive, we're gonna be putting another SBR basin within probably the next five to six years depending on what our growth is. So we're gonna have to increase the capacity on that. We've got some development that is planned throughout, to any, in the long run, we're looking at, we may have to upsize some of our sewer life from eight to twelve and so on. So we've got, you know, with growth, you've got, you'd have to keep improving your system with that. You know, we have, as residents see increased costs in their electric bill, we have increased costs in our electric bill. You know, these twelve plants, about ten, twelve thousand dollars a year, or a month to operate the plants. So whenever folks are in town seeing increase, we see an increase in our cost also.
Well, SCADA system as well. The SCADA system.
We have to upgrade our, our system. We have to be in compliance. We have nutrient levels that's right around the core requirements that EPA is gonna bring, and DNR is gonna bring for nutrient phosphates. So we have to do that. We have to, we're looking at upgrading our, of our UV.
Yeah, re-UV system.
System in our, our plants. So there's a, it's, it's not one of those build it and it doesn't take anybody that's operating.
Yeah, that, I realize this is all, you know, doesn't address the point of the, the two people that spoke, you know, just, and like Harold said, they bring forth some, some good points, some very good. And I'm sure that the one lady that, that spoke to us, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't remember her name, but it is, is not by herself. There, there are others out there in the same boat.
Well, if I remember, in 2016, that number was like a, it's like a low two-hundred number of people that were on the five-dollar billing plan. So, okay. So it wasn't a huge number of the population, but it was still the population.
Do we still have the slide with using alternate three, what the projected rates would be, need to be for the next few years? Because if I remember correctly, those leveled out. And we weren't looking at any significant increases for the next few years if they did alternate three issues. Did I go correctly?
That's right. We were looking at, uh, there was, there was, uh, we were looking at the change in the volume charge here in the future. So kind of correcting that. You can't, you cannot change the fixed rate too many years in a row. It throws things off balance and things.
Right. It's not fair enough at that point, but at this point, these increases are still covering the costs that are shared by everybody. That's what the fixed charge is useful. But he's right. We just had to catch up to what the charge should be and then increase the volume charge.
I, I think, um, when we first took over the sewer and we did that five-dollar rate and they did no increase then, that, that was something that we're paying for now. And it was decided not to do an increase for, for a few years after the city took over the sewer. And so the, this is basically the, the ramifications for us not having those increases in those years. And so we're now trying to catch up to make that income.
Yeah, they ended up five-dollar charge in the nine years and they didn't address it at all in 2014.
We're trying to pay for two things at the same time. Trying to pay for the current operation costs as well as probably money for future upgrades and compliance and those types of things. And here over the last few years, we've been barely making enough money to even pay what it costs to operate it on a, on a budget, let alone set aside any money for any future capital project. The first year we made progress on that was changing the fixed price point last year and that's why staff is recommending we do that again.
So, so last year was one of our first years on record that we actually made any money and we made $64,000. This year, it looks like we'll make a little bit more money in there. We'll probably make around four or five hundred thousand dollars in WPC. But next year, fiscal year nineteen, we are budgeted to spend $5,200,000 and we're only bringing in $4,700,000.
Yeah, we're pulling in reserves to cover it and that's why we're keeping the, the great increases as low as we can is to, so we don't have that big jump in the impact to the users.
Yeah. We, we have to get the upgrade to the SCADA system in this next year.
Well, and we're not talking other cities because Warrensburg's where we live, but I know other communities you were talking about are even, we're kind of under that, a lot more people higher. So we're really trying to keep it as low as we can. But some other cities our size have pretty good size bills.
Yeah, they're only gonna go up. Everybody's facing the same regulatory issues with the nutrient limits. It all depends on where you fit in your permit cycle. Permit cycles are five years. Some of them are jumping up here in the next two to three years. You guys are probably saying, you know, beyond five years for where you fall. But, but yeah, it's, it's a big issue. The same thing with, you know, Slim talked about the, the sewer infrastructure replacing it. You know, that's, you know, sewers have a fifty-year life cycle on them. You're now coming due on a lot of those. They're still in the fifties, sixties, seventies. And you're starting to see the breaks. In EPA, that's, that's their hot topic right now. That's where they're monitoring it. So a lot of communities are seeing huge increases because they have to replace, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy percent of their system that they haven't been budgeting before.
Another issue there is unfortunately, back in the fifties and sixties, there was funding available to help communities put this infrastructure in.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing.
This time, we're looking at unfunded mandates.
Right.
And replacement. We're not getting any financial assistance from the federal government or the state governments to replace this infrastructure. And that all falls back unfortunately on the backs of our citizens.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have an ordinance. Let's let me make sure I'm not skipping one. Okay. We have an ordinance amending section four dash two-one-six, meetings and reports of the Arts Commission of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Warrensburg.
Um, this is a request from the Arts Commission. They have had problems in the past meeting the number of people that they need in order to meet. So they have requested that we add a quorum of four and they are currently a seven-member board. So this, this is simply all they're asking that we add that to the ordinance.
But this is, this is more of a, kind of, I know when you talked to me about it, this is more of a change of an oversight to the ordinance because the ordinance for some reason never got changed.
It never was in there. That's true.
Right. So this is just, this is just cleaning it up. So it matched there would be.
Right. Yeah. And so it's just strictly that took Doug about, well, I don't want to take.
All his work.
Hours. Well, he finally caught it, Jimmy. So thank you, Doug. No, I'm just kidding.
I move to pass that bill. Will you read the second? Reading my title.
Uh, Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
This is an ordinance amending section four dash two-sixteen, meetings and reports of the Arts Commission of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Warrensburg. This is for adoption or rejection. Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have an ordinance amending section twelve dash twenty-seven, diversity and inclusion task force.
Suzie is here tonight. She might want to add to this, but they have requested eleven members. I think originally you all had, was it seven?
It was like twenty-seven. I don't know.
Yeah.
Anyway, I see the authority on this board.
It's going back and forth. But yeah, we wanted to just establish clarity that there are eleven members, seven of whom are voting to kind of model the other commissions and boards, four of whom are non-voting. And then in addition to that, our, our city council liaison being non-voting. So there'd been back and forth about whether it was seven or nine voting. And so we just wanted to establish that clarity. Seven voting, four non, for a total of eleven.
And your quorum then is?
Is four. Yeah. Of the voting. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
I move that bill. We pass second reading by title.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
This is an ordinance amending section twelve dash twenty-seven, composition terms appointments of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Warrensburg. This is for adoption or rejection. Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Next, we have an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a depository contract and pledge agreement with Equity Bank.
Mayor, members of the city council, staff received five qualifying bids on the banking RFP. We had great bids this time around. But Equity Bank, which is our current bank, probably had the best bid. Their bid potentially could yield the city around $180,000 in interest. We are the RFP committee. We had a, a committee of, of four people, three staff and a council member, which decided on these. In your package, you have a RFP sheet that kind of shows the, the difference of the interest that may be received on these, on each RFP. Captain, staff will recommend the city go with Equity Bank and remain with Equity Bank.
I move this bill. We move the second reading by title. Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a depository contract and pledge agreement with Equity Bank. This is for adoption or rejection. Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have an ordinance re-adopting section two dash one to establish procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interests of certain municipal officials.
Uh, this is a state requirement. The city of Warrensburg needs to file this every other year. Uh, it's what we do is we disclose any potential conflicts of any elected officials. And that would be if you're doing. You just need to pass the ordinance so I can. I think you asked me that last time, didn't you? Well.
It would have to fill out substantially more paperwork annually with the ethics.
Yeah.
This bill, we move the second reading by title.
Perfect. Yeah. And I'll send, if you want their number, you can.
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
This is an ordinance re-adopting section twelve, excuse me, two dash one, to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interests of certain municipal officials. This is for adoption or rejection. Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Next, we have an ordinance establishing a thirty-five mile per hour speed limit on business thirteen McGuire from Cooper Boulevard to the north city limits in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Mayor, mayor, city, mayor, member of city council, the traffic commission met on the July eighteenth weather discussion items was production speed limit through this stretch of roadway from Cooper Boulevard to the north city limits. As you well know, plans are to build roundabout area of Cooper Boulevard and McGuire. Intersection is quite wide up there. It is very dangerous for people trying to make, cross that intersection. The hope was to do a speed reduction at this time and might lend some safety to that and allow people to cross the roadway in a safer fashion. After the roundabout speed limit will probably be somewhere in the realm. But currently, there's no speed limit. You're coming at fifty-five mile an hour until you get north, or excuse me, south of this intersection. Start the speed reduction to thirty-five at that point. So we'd like to slow the, the traffic down coming northbound and also reduce the speed of people going out of the city to the north. The recommendation of the traffic commission was to reduce the speed to thirty-five mile an hour in both directions.
Thirty-five mile an hour is, is the speed limit that's, that's set unless declared otherwise, isn't it, for the city? Is it twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
Okay.
Did the, I think it was four hundred dollar economic impact, did that include any sort of flashing light at first or anything to note?
We had some discussions, but we, we are gonna try to put a flashing light on there because there's a note that that is a speed limit after.
Flashing light on patrol car, probably.
That's what I don't want to have.
Well, see.
Yeah.
You go out to twist.
You know, that's, that's my concern. I mean, can I drive that intersection all the time and I will be the first guy to raise my hand and tell you I'm not doing thirty-five? So, I mean, you know, but, but, um, you know, I know the highway patrol works that area a lot and they'll have cars pulled over there on a regular basis. And to me, the safety of that highway patrol pulled over is probably more detrimental than that car that was doing, you know, forty-five. And that's the only thing that worries me is that our guys are safe out there because I see it all the time in areas where cops got somebody pulled over and I'm going, you're more at risk right there than that guy was doing sixty-five, you know?
Well, is, would you envision a, a grace period for the enforcement of this thirty-five?
I don't think we typically do that with ordinance. I mean, the, as far as I know, I mean, once your ordinance is in effect.
Right.
We don't typically do grace periods.
Okay.
It'd be a flashing light and one of those speed limit.
We could take the speed limit out there.
I'm just thinking for the first week or so, it could be helpful because I, like Brian, I'm not going thirty-five right there. But I might if I had one of those.
People crossing on Hawthorne Boulevard.
Yeah, that's scary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Really, that's the, the safety point.
I hate that intersectional for passion, but I drive it probably ten times a day.
I want the traffic anyway. So coming from like Applebee's going north till where Hawthorne starts, that's the stretch you're talking, right? From the line you used to cross it.
To the state limits. We want to get to the end of our state limits.
Gotcha.
And the other thing to keep in mind too is when you are speeding, you give up your right of way. So if someone enters the intersection, even though they enter it and you hit them if you're speeding, you're a faulty accident even though they didn't yield to you from the stop sign. So the motorist expects your car to be traveling the speed limit and that intersection is so big, I think that's one of the reasons that are contributing to the accidents because someone looks at a car, thinks it's going thirty-five, starts to cross and it's not, it's going faster and that causes the accident. So.
Misjudge how long it's gonna take them to get across that intersection too.
Right. You just have to estimate.
Yeah.
Basically, you're six miles.
Yeah. 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 I know two people personally that have gotten pretty bad wrecks there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It seems like we're having a wreck a week there here lately.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
We had the last Thursday, I believe it was, and the week before, we had one. And there vary degrees of severity.
Right.
I like the idea of the trailer for a while though to kind of let the public know.
Yeah. That, that would be a good idea.
Move to pass that ordinance the second reading by title.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
This is an ordinance establishing a thirty-five mile, miles per hour speed limit on business thirteen McGuire from Cooper Boulevard to the north city limit. thirteen McGuire from Cooper Boulevard to the north city limits in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, looks like kind of the second part of that. An ordinance establishing a three-way stop at the intersection of North Holden Street and Hawthorne Boulevard in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Likewise, this was also an item of discussion that the traffic commission made. Part of the intersection is perfected, and we have annexed it for everyone to come into town, so some of the traffic controls that were done by county measure, not by the city measure on that. So the discussion was need to put in a three-way stop at the intersection of what we will call Hawthorne Boulevard and North Holden Street. There, we have a situation there where we have, there is some speed in that area also. Stop signs are not there for, or be put in place to control speed, but the safety of that intersection because the angle of approach that you have, if you're westbound on Hawthorne Boulevard, there tends to be a loss of vision of anybody that is southbound on Holden Street, and potentially do not see a vehicle coming at you. So the discussion was for the traffic commission to look at that intersection, and also thought that need to be some safety for those people that are pulling on the Holden Street from Hawthorne Boulevard. So the thought was a three-way stop if you have to make it in this area. So staff and traffic commission would request that council prove the three-way stop for this intersection.
Would you envision these stop signs remaining when the roundabout is in place?
There's some, a little bit change in configuration at the intersection once the roundabout is built, but I believe it probably will stay in place unless they make it more sweeping intersection where you're cutting off Holden right into Hawthorne Boulevard, then there'd be basically a controlled stop southbound on Holden Street.
Okay.
I guess, I think, I know this is something that, oh, probably last year I had talked to the traffic commission about, and that was, but my thing was to put the two stop signs up, the new stop signs, but get rid of this one coming off of the highway, because when you're accelerating through that intersection, now I'm accelerating through that intersection, and as I get through that intersection, I'm now on my brakes, so I'm really slowing me down getting through the intersection, and I, and when you're sitting at that stop sign, your visibility is awful, you know, because your car's already at an angle, so your visibility is awful going north or south in there. I mean, I think if you just allowed that traffic to continuously flow, and if we put a roundabout in here and you still have all three of those stop signs, you're going to clog your roundabout up.
Well, it'll, like I say, it's potentially will change to just be, you know, the southbound Holden Street, and a stop on that roundabout in configuration, because it's more of a sweeping, which actually would allow that movement, as you were talking about at the time that the roundabouts put in. I don't have the plans with me, but there is a change in configuration on there. So, the traffic commission, there was some discussion on how the, the stop sign should be placed there, and if you arrive, it should be a three-way stop.
Not sure how many flashing lights you wanted at intersections, but I would say Holden going north. It's going to look like a college party over there, but.
We have the budget for some more flashing lights.
Yes, satisfied.
I do think that one might.
With still those for the other intersection where we have over there, kind of grows in point where people got used to those intersections now.
I don't know, I just about ran through one the other day.
I did, I almost forgot.
Holden has.
It was on my. Yeah. Move said bill be passed the second reading by title.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
This is an ordinance establishing a three-way stop at the intersection of North Holden Street and Hawthorne Boulevard in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
All right, next, we have an ordinance accepting the Brady Commerce Park Veterans Road Extension Project Phase Two for Maintenance by the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Well, kind of quoting a kid's tale we had, by the hair of a chinny chen chin, we did get this roadway completed before the time that it needed to be opened up. We had, every Sam is a very good contractor with the city. We had some change orders. We don't like change orders, but we have to do change orders in the project. We had to change some of the intersection configuration for big trucks because of the initial planning, we did not know we was going to have a truck stop just, so there's some configuration changes on that. Also, we changed the pavement sections to improve the reinforcement of those sections, which we thought were very well placed for this project. We did add some credits on the project on there, and all in all, original contracts filed are ninety-eight thousand and forty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. Final contract with change orders was six hundred and seventy-two thousand by a hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-two cents, believing that we have a very good project out there. The future life of that roadway should be very well. Staff was asked at city council, accept the Veterans Road Phase Two extension.
I'll just stay with the completion of this, we've completed two of the five bond issued projects that the public approved. So we've got one of the pumper trucks of the fire department, this is done. Three of the five will be done soon with Phase One of Veterans Road. Four of the five will be delivered soon with the ladder truck coming here in a few weeks, and the last one is the traffic signal upgrade, so we're making significant progress on what the voters have proven about.
I did notice that Phase One of Veterans Road has the base rock down, looks like it's compacted and ready for service.
Just building my thunder for it, yes.
I just had to drive out there.
Put it on asphalt next Thursday, so.
Next Thursday.
All right.
Good deal, good deal. I move said bill be passed second reading by title.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
This is an ordinance accepting the Brady Commerce Park Veterans Road Extension Project Phase Two for Maintenance by the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
We have an ordinance establishing minimum regulations governing the safeguarding, sorry, of life and property from fire and explosion hazards known as the Fire Prevention Code of the city of Warrensburg, state of Missouri.
Mayor, mayor, members of the council, this is the second reading on the proposal of the upgrade, the new fire codes, two thousand and eighteen fire codes. We have submitted a letter in your council packet for some options and additional information, and do you have any more questions?
Feedback from the informational session on the eighth, that Josh came in, we had, I believe, four of the six, or depending on where you make, make the line, but either the five or six present at that time, and the feedback that we received was that we would ask the council to table the discussion at this time. They are working on real number bids at that event. We talked about ballpark bids, which were put together by the fire department, and the numbers that they were putting out at that time, we're still waiting to receive bids back from the business owners, but the high side of the impact, the cost, was a hundred thousand dollars for Elk's Lodge, because they're the largest as well as the farthest away from a water main, and they had an initial twenty thousand dollar for a Knox box for a backflow.
Backflow preventer.
Preventer, and then their projection on the least impact was Bodie's at twenty-five thousand dollar ballpark, and then everybody else was falling in, in the middle of that, and they are currently working on getting bids, and I believe it involves the water department and getting some other things back, and so it's taking a little more time than they projected, and so they asked if we would buy them a little bit of time so we could actually make some decisions based on real numbers, as well as share their phone numbers with the people who are leading those organizations, so that if council wanted to contact them to understand more about their individual budgets and take into consideration if we want to move something forward, how much time could we extend grace feasibly to allow them to budget for said items? And so that's the feedback that I'm bringing back from the informational meeting on the eighth. It was a very civil, very good discussion at that time, but still waiting on some real numbers.
Okay.
Leo, any update on numbers back?
One of the guys that I talked with, he was still waiting on the water department to get in contact, and he still hasn't contacted me yet.
Sounds good.
I called the water department, too, and I haven't gotten contact.
Yeah, that's to upgrade the main?
Uh, yeah, he needs to know the size of the, I guess, the water lines that are in front of businesses, and then figure out what it would take to bring that, you know, from where they're at, I guess, to build or something. They call it a riser.
Right, yeah, right.
The water company's been quite busy the last couple of weeks, they've had several main, or last week and a half, they've had several main breaks, so.
Okay. The, the Legion did get an estimate from Ozarks, and they came in at forty-eight thousand, three forty-five thirty. That's just to install that, and then based on the city's estimates for the water, you know, for American Missouri Water Hookups and stuff, we're looking at about eighty-five thousand. So you figure out the ten thousand square foot building, you're looking at fifty a square foot to do there, to do theirs, and that's not, they, they also, when they initially hadn't come in to do the estimate, they weren't aware of some other areas that had to be done, so that number will actually increase a little bit from there. And then, I know, did you, did the other guy show up Monday, show up today there?
No.
Okay.
I represent American Legion, just want you to know I'm here if there were any questions. Eighty-five thousand is basically the starting point, you know, have all the areas covered under that. When he came out, I didn't know all the requirements, so.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's, that is a fully written estimate that he would go to work tomorrow, we told him to.
Oh, that's not an engineering estimate.
So, no, this is, this is a contractor. This is a contractor, he came out, looked at the building, gave us the estimate and everything, and he, I mean, it's, I can share with all you guys, it's a fully written up.
Okay.
So if the council did hypothetically pass that, is that something American Legion can absorb as eighty-five hundred?
Not in the short term, no. I mean, that's for anywhere between eighty-five to a hundred thousand.
Sure.
It's for a nonprofit organization, it's a lot of money to come up with short term.
It's, a lot of it comes down to this, is, you know, it's like the American Legion said it, the Elks Club has said it, is, you know, they're nonprofits and their money goes to help kids and help other, or different things, so if we pull a hundred thousand dollars out from that purpose, that's a hundred thousand, it's not going to go into the community for something else.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, and I don't know, I discussed with someone, I don't know, about if we did grandfather it and didn't have these organizations do that, post a sign saying that they're not in compliance with whatever book or code this is, and then grandfather them hypothetically or they wouldn't, no?
I don't know if I want to put that on.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Five years, I don't like the three to five, it's either three or five.
I mean, I, I partially, I do like the proposal there for number four, the seventy-five, twenty-five rule, but then I also agree, how do we track it and how do we?
Right, right.
You know.
Before we get too far into the, into the weeds on, on not only this, but the next code issues that we're going to be discussing, as I was talking to people after I got back from the trip, and I'm sorry I didn't get to attend the meeting that, that Casey attended for us, and I'm grateful to him for doing that, I heard a couple of times that Fire Chief Kushner and Mr. Stewart are trying to ramrod through some code changes for the city. I would remind everybody that Chief Kushner opened his presentation at the last city council meeting and stated basically, he's offering changes or proposals that upgrade the protection of life and safety for the citizens of Warrensburg. He says, that's my job. The buck, as far as approving or disapproving, rests right here, not with these two guys. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Can I say something real quick? I guarantee it'll cost me a lot more than twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Because you're also talking about having to remodel it, redo the whole ceilings, you're not just talking about putting the water lines, you're talking about a lot of remodeling, it gives you a lot more expense. What gets me is today we're legal, today we're safe, according to you guys. In two weeks, we won't be. That is, after forty-three years, that just doesn't seem right to me.
I guess.
Like the chief said, you do have other options.
Yeah.
Instead of closing businesses down. That's basically what you're doing in a couple places.
I mean, another thing that was brought, that's been brought to my attention is that, you know, we're also talking about, you know, walk-in coolers that are, you know, that we've got positioned outside within six feet of a building, those have to have a sprinkler in them, you know, well, not going to be consuming a beer in there, and, you know, I mean, I just think that maybe we're, some of this, we're taking it a little too far.
I'd kind of like to respond to that, I mean, in my opinion, the building that was built in the nineteen-sixties has been fine for this long a period of time. That's like saying that a Mustang built in nineteen sixty-five is as safe as a two thousand and nineteen Mustang. Yeah, you've been driving it for fifty-plus years, but that, that doesn't mean that it's designed and engineered as safely as what's being done today. And, and I agree with Councilman Watts, Chief Kushner and I are just doing our job to make sure there's a voice for the safety of the public. That's what we're doing. The council can choose to adapt our recommendations to whatever they feel is appropriate for Warrensburg, that's what they're elected to do, and we support the council in doing that. But neither Kushner or I ever want to be blamed that we didn't push for the safety of our community hard enough, and, and that's what we're doing. So, and again, I also remind the council and the public, these codes changes have been discussed, maybe not in Warrensburg, but nationally for a long period of time, and this is just the beginning of phases of changes that are going to come out. And I guess my question to the council and to the community is, you can begin tweaking and changing these and building a dam to hold these changes back, but how big are you going to build that dam and how long are you going to leave it up? Because the next time the code comes out, there's going to be additional changes, and the reason these are done is they're in response to unsafe situations of previously acceptable engineering that in today's circumstances are no longer acceptable, and they felt it was important enough to make these changes and make these recommendations, that these be affected immediately, not just for new construction, but for existing buildings, and that doesn't happen very often. And I think that shows nationally how important these issues are, and it's Chief Kushner and my job to make sure the council is fully aware of that, so as they make their decision, they have that piece of information to take into account. We will support whatever decision they make, and we have given alternatives and we have given options that are separate from the codes that have been recommended, we understand that, we get that, but our responsibility is to protect first and foremost the safety of the public, and there have been significant incidences across the country where people were in unsafe situations, and these are the recommendations to remember that. If we're talking about saving property, you probably wouldn't hear me arguing as loud, but if we're talking about saving lives and buying people time to get out of an unsafe situation, I will continue to argue very strongly for that.
When I did the, my research on it, the only removing, removal of a grandfather clause that I could come across was in seismic zone five in California, where business owners were, or structure owners, were required to upgrade some of their structures to comply with earthquake problems. So that's the only other example I could find, and that kind of ties in with, with what Mr. Stewart's saying about changing designs, any building that's built in California now, or any, any seismic zone five district, require. zone five district requires it meet engineering that's prescribed for that seismic zone. So it's not without precedent, anyway.
Well, and I know we're not talking school buses with children, but those are our future. Why, and you can't answer this, I'm just going to say this out here, because I understand the safety of our citizens in Warrensburg at the bars, but our school buses with our future little kids on them don't have seatbelts. It's a law to wear a seatbelt. So that would be one of my arguments if I could go out and review about school buses. I get that the council will make the decision for the bars, whether it's right or wrong, but these places need to stay in business. And I, you know, American Legion is a heart, Elk's Lodge is the heart of Warrensburg, and for them to come up with 120-some thousand right now, they can't. Three years from now, they might be able to be budgeted, but that's just my argument. I don't have anything to do with it, but school buses don't have seatbelts. So these, I feel, and I'm not making my plea right now, but I'm saying that Godfather, Grandfather and some of these businesses, if they want to, if Leo decides to put 120,000 to make his, and it's not the council's decision to do that, he can do that if he wants, but Bodys can't. That's just my arguments.
What is, because we got the Elks, the Legion, Bodys.
Heroes.
Players.
Then Heroes have to?
I don't know, who's the other two buildings? I can't recall the other two for some reason.
I thought there were six.
They were naming the six.
Yeah.
Which is partially being done now.
We're in compliance.
Was Heroes the other?
Yes.
Keggers was one of them, but I think.
Just barely underneath by square, by occupancy, they just squeaked under is what Josh.
They were changed.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the district, which is sprinkling their system right now.
Well, they're doing upgrades anyway.
They're doing about another building right now.
Okay.
But they're going to do all the buildings.
They're going to, as they go through that building, they have to put one into the entire building.
Okay, Heroes is the other building then?
Uh, I think we have a motion before us, don't we?
I had asked to table the, based on feedback from the meeting that we had with the majority of the businesses and organizations represented or involved, they had asked us to buy some more time so that they could get accurate bids, so it wasn't just ballpark numbers thrown out there. It would be actual bids, taking into account their structures and things like that, that maybe could change the bid, you know, plus or minus.
Sure.
And so just so that we, this is a big decision for the council and that we buy a little bit of time so that we can work with them, so that we can make the best decision possible, so it's not off of hearsay numbers, it's actual, accurate numbers.
Is there a follow-up meeting for that?
We, at that meeting, remind me, we had asked.
There's two more meetings.
There's two more meetings on the 16th, but we had asked those folks to share those bids with either Harold or Cindy, along with their phone number, and then you all could disseminate that to us, and then we can follow up individually, you know, see those as well as follow up individually if we have questions or special circumstances, or maybe even a site visit, you know, if need be.
And I would love to go to the 16th, but I am out of town, so I won't be able to attend that if any other council member was going to.
16th of August.
The 9:00 AM one, Midwestport Realtors plans to attend that one. So we're expecting a large realtor.
They might want to let your membership know that then.
What?
They might want to let your membership know that then. First I'm hearing, that's why I'm saying that.
That Bobby Hall gave us.
Okay. They just haven't let the membership know yet.
Okay. And then, I thought that actually.
The 16th.
Both of us.
But we're expecting the Realtors there on the morning session, is that correct?
That was the indication.
Okay, okay. All right.
Talk to Bobby Hall.
I just paid my membership dues, I guess.
I would like to table it.
Yeah, based on the request from those businesses, my opinion is that we, you grant the request and table it.
Well, okay, so.
Just the fire.
I'm in favor of table it, but I'd like to set a date in the future here, because if we don't, so fourth meeting or second meeting in September? Because that gives everybody, that gives them a month.
That should be it, enough to get a bid back.
Yeah.
Yeah, that should be plenty of time.
Okay, so table it to the second meeting in September. Okay. Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes. Okay, next we have an ordinance establishing minimum regulations governing the design, installation, alteration, repair, maintenance, and use of electrical conductors and equipment within the public, within or on public and private buildings known as the Electrical Code of the City of Warrensburg, State of Missouri.
Members of the council, at the last meeting, we brought to you the proposed 2018 building code set, all of which you see in front of you. We also brought to you six proposed local ordinances we'd like to add to the building code. So those are all laid out. One of those I'd like to speak to on the electrical. Councilman Jacobs asked a question at the last meeting, but in the case where a new electric panel was installed, would an electric, or would the disconnect on the outside automatically be required? I said yes, and after looking at that further, I'd like to change that to no. Only in the event that the service on the outside is replaced or moved, would we require the disconnect. So we're going to keep it to that scope. I just wanted to make that correction.
On renovation, we were talking.
On renovation, on existing, I'm sorry, yeah.
So you upgrade 100 amp to a 200 amp, you're going to put disconnect?
You are, because that meter would have to be upsized.
Correct.
Okay, if by upside, if you do any change to that meter, you have to put the disconnect in. Or if you move it, you would have to put the disconnect in.
Okay.
But if that meter does not need to be touched, if I'm doing a panel and I don't need to upgrade the meter, or I'm just fixing the mast overhead, then I would not need to put the disconnect in, in that case.
But any new construction?
All new construction automatically would be required.
Will require, okay.
Yes. So I just wanted to clarify that.
And you did say something, let me just interrupt, like on one of the big buildings, like the complexes, like 215, 211, you said something about there's a box so you could disconnect it. Is that going to be a requirement, the electrical box? Because like if we had a flood, we had to wait till cases, you know, got there?
That's exactly right. We would require.
So is that something that has to be done soon, or in the code?
It would be done only in the event that there is repair work made, or a change to that service. This is not, we're not going to go all over town looking for six complexes.
Right.
Only in the event where there's a remodel or change the service for whatever reason.
I mean, they had slinkers systems, we haven't had a fire there, but they have sprinkler systems required at that time, but then.
So I, I mean, I, we've got apartments right now in town that are upgrading their meters on their own. And right now, there is no requirement for the disconnect unless, well, there may be, because they're upsizing those. But we, currently, we have the 10-foot rule, right? So if there's more than 10 feet between the panel and the meter, you automatically have to put in the disconnect. But in the event, once this is passed, that they would come forward and say, we want to change out all of the meters on all of our buildings, we would automatically make them put that in. The disconnect would have to go, because, would have to go in because those are all being replaced.
And again, this is a life safety deal, is what we're talking about.
Absolutely. To get that power shut down.
Trying to get the electrician to see what it would cost. I mean, obviously, it is a life safety thing, and if we had a fire and we needed to get them in there, we need to get that turned off.
Right.
I didn't know what it would cost, yet.
I talked to, I talked to Shippey, he said you're probably looking at around 500 bucks.
Okay, I said 1,000, so that's good.
Yeah, the prices, and I think we talked about this last time, on a 100-amp box, you're talking $100 on the box, new wire, 200 to 300.
Mm-hmm.
And again, it just depends on how much service wire you're talking.
You're not going to get, I mean, you're not going to get an electrician to put a 100-amp box anymore. All the ones that I've, all the ones that I've done, they've all upgraded to the 200 because they won't.
Yeah, I understand that. But I'm telling you that National Electric says the minimum's 100 amp, right? But I understand, so I have to follow that.
Correct, I understand.
But in the, in the case of a 200 amp, the box is about 200. A new wire can be anywhere from 400 to 600. And again, those numbers can really vary because it depends on how far we're running it.
Right.
So I know those are ballpark figures.
I know that.
It's about 85,000.
Yeah. I know that we've talked about price point and being able to build affordable homes, but all that aside, I think the addition of this exterior breaker is something that, irregardless of any of that, needs to be installed. It, we've already had an instance, and we don't need another one. I'm a little bit concerned, though, about some of the, not necessarily in this one, some to follow, maybe mechanical. I'm a little bit concerned that I don't know enough about the changes to make an informed vote, I guess is where I'm at right now. Just on the time that I've had to review everything that we're looking at tonight, I'm afraid there might be things hiding out there that we don't know about, or we might want to change, that the committee did or did not address. One of the things is we require a light to be installed in an attic space, I think, for the firemen. Probably not going to work if they pull the disconnect that we're putting on the outside of the building. You know, that's, that's a small example of things that I just, you know.
Well, if I can speak to the light, I believe the light probably is there more for maintenance than I think it's for fire.
Hmm, okay.
But the time fire gets there, they also make an attic access for the fire department. And, you know, by the time you found that access at the end of the hall, around the corner, down.
Sure.
Up in the closet, you know, but there it is, right? That's, that's why it's there. The light for fire, possibly, I think a lot of times the code looks at that more for maintenance purposes. So if I'm in the attic, whether it's wiring, you know, I've got an HVAC unit up there, it's, in my mind, I think it's more for that. By the time the wire gets there, power, no power coming in from the roof versus going up through the access.
We'll disagree on why it's there, but that's okay.
Okay.
You know, they.
Well, to add to that, I would say there may be, you know, that's not to say it's not for fire. I think there's, you know, there's multiple reasons, but.
Well, you always say, I know what you're getting at, you always hate for somebody to call the city and say, well, we just passed that. Well, I didn't know it. Or the council passed it and we didn't really understand it, or what we did.
Well, one of the other things that I didn't know about is the mechanical code is requiring a vacuum breaker on dishwashers?
Yes.
The new code.
Yes.
That.
A backflow built in, an air gap?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
But in talking with three manufacturers of dishwashers, they have three safeties built into the dishwashers that are currently on the market. So I guess I don't understand the need for a fourth. So, you know, I'm just, I'm just saying that, I don't know enough, I don't know what I don't know, I guess, is where I'm at. And I don't, I just don't think I know enough to make an informed vote.
And some of us have taken time to go visit with various staff members.
Yep.
Personally and stuff, and so, I mean, if you want to be able to have that time, we're glad that you enjoyed Alaska and your vacation.
Alaska was great. And I'd highly recommend it for everybody.
I would be glad to give you our book that highlights all the significant code changes.
Yeah.
So.
And he'd probably read it too.
I will.
And then mistake it too.
But that's what our update committee used.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is all the highlights.
Okay.
And I would say, Bob, in that case, a lot of the products are already building those features in.
Yeah.
But the code is catching up. So sometimes the code is, we have not put anything in the code to clarify that or to make that clear. Sometimes it's a catch-up thing to code.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's a lot of things they're doing in here. They're rearranging, they're trying to reorganize the code better, they're taking things out that are redundant or were not necessary in the first place.
Correct.
So in a case like this, and energy code, I think, is a good example, a lot of these products are already built to that level.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Well, I apologize for not being able to do my homework before, since I was out of town, but I am not going to apologize for going to Alaska. That was a great trip.
We're always glad to answer those questions. Like I said, I've got the highlights.
Okay.
Anytime you want to come in and look at those.
So yes, here's a question I've got though, because I look at number six there, and I know we talked about this at the last meeting, but this is where I'm tripping up at, is it, in there it says addition or alterations require a permit, okay? So if I add a circuit breaker to a circuit breaker panel, I know we asked this last time, but to me, that's an addition, which means I got to pull a permit, which now means I got to have an arc fault circuit breaker put in there instead of a regular circuit breaker.
True.
Okay, see, there's where my problem is, because now, we'll just say, an average circuit breaker panel has 20 circuit breakers in it. I meant to go downstairs in my basement and count mine, but we'll just, we'll just use 20 as an average number. Went over the lows today just to see what the difference in price was. There's about a $30 difference in price in those two circuit breakers, so that's a $600 increase in that.
I understand. I understand. So to go back what we talked about in the last meeting, when you add to the system, electric or plumbing, when you add to the system, if I'm adding water pipe or drain, waste and vent, or I'm adding circuits, that's when the permit's required.
So here's, here's where this is my huge concern for my industry and for the whole setup here, is okay, so I get a home inspector that comes out there and says, there's a circuit breaker that's double-tapped, so I got two wires going to one circuit breaker. So, okay, it's an easy fix. It's a $25 fix, you know, 75 bucks for the electrician to show up and 25 bucks to take care of the problem. Well, now it's 75 bucks for the electrician to show up, and $100 to.
I might call out of a pick.
Well, see.
You're getting into the weeds, but no, I understand what you're saying. So you're getting very technical, you're getting right down to the.
Right. I'm getting to the real life of what's happening out there, you know?
I try to be reasonable.
Right.
Yep.
But I'm telling you technically, that if you add to the system, you need a permit.
How much are these permits that we're talking about?
The minimum's $30. Most are $30.
It's not the permit is the issue, it's the fact that the circuit breaker is now going to cost me $30 anymore.
Sure.
And I'm sure the electrician's going to charge me a little bit more for installing it because it appears to have an extra wire coming out of it, so I'm sure this is.
So short of adding to the system, so if you're, you're putting in new fixtures.
Right.
So you're fine. New flooring, fixtures, sink, tub, you're fine. It's when you add to that pipe system or the circuits, the electrical, or changing out the panel.
So did we want to table this and bring this back up again in a couple weeks after we have?
That's what I'm asking for.
Is two weeks enough for everything? The fire, you know, we can buy some more time because we're waiting on outside parties, but is two weeks enough for you to be able to visit with Brett and whoever else?
I'm retired.
You have.
We do have the two more meetings Thursday, 9:00 and 3:00.
Right.
So glad to, they're two-hour sessions, and we'll stay as long as we need to to answer questions, so.
And I will say that, again, the committee did yeoman's work going through all of these codes, the new, as well as, and trying to compare the, what we have.
Yeah, there's a lot, and.
Yeah, there is a lot.
But, you know, it's a stack of codebooks. There's a lot to go through. And they didn't go through every codebook, but there, again, that's what, you know, we And they didn't go through every code book, but there, again, that's what, you know, we put the highlights. So, there, there's just a lot to go through.
There is.
So, Bob, are you wanting to table each of these?
Nine-two through nine-nine?
So, all of the nine.
I would like to table, table those to the next council meeting.
If that's agreeable.
Okay. I make a motion that we table items nine-two through nine-nine to the next council meeting.
And again, I apologize for not having done my homework before this meeting.
Well, the informational sessions will be helpful, too, I think, so...
They will, they will. And...
That was the sixteenth at what time?
Nine and three, isn't it?
Yeah.
And I would like to make a kind of a side note here. Uh, I sure wish we had this much citizen input when we're talking about the McGarvey Street Bridge.
Yeah, me, too.
Would've really been helpful.
I think the realtors are bringing the donuts, so...
Hey, I'm, I'm a member, they haven't even informed me to, we're, we're attending the meeting, so...
That's because you're buying the donuts.
No, I make an annual payment, then they can buy their own donuts.
Thanks, Brett.
I need to call roll on that, Casey's motion. Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, we already went through other business, um, with base community council. So, any appearances not listed on the agenda? Um, miscellaneous matters from the mayor and/or city council. While we're here, I did have one quick question. The Holden Street project, while I'm very excited about it, those who have reached out and asked about the timing of it?
It's MoDOT.
Publicize that we would have it completed by October first. Question, why we didn't start here, is that probably what you're referring to?
Perhaps just the timing of, with it being maybe one of the busiest weekends in that area of town.
Well, we, we always try to have our projects done, you know, to a portion of the thing that we're following. We were held up by MoDOT, which was quite fortunate.
That I knew.
We, we had lesser bitters than we really wanted on the project, and MoDOT weren't really with you in much of that, so...
Okay.
We, we lost basically a month there.
Yeah.
Stans had quite a few projects this year. We've been pulling a pretty heavy wagon. And, uh, so, some things kind of are back down here to this point, so...
Do you still anticipate completion by October first or later?
No, I still anticipate, uh, completion by, by the first day.
By October first, so homecoming should go off as normal?
Very good. Headway with the project, we've had some, there's always just some utilities that need to be relocated that weren't installed before. Right now, the sister lease, you know, it's supposed to be in tomorrow to move their line out of the way, but getting lines moved out of the way at the underground, taking a little time, but contractors definitely have to move it away, so...
I'm the one that missmokes, misspoken, then we're not having to reroute the homecoming period?
No, this time, no.
We did originally think that was gonna be a possibility.
Sorry.
We originally thought that to be the case.
We did, we did talk about that publicly, the anticipation that that would happen, but things have improved, the contractor's moving faster, we don't think that would be a conflict.
You know, this proj, this project, you know, a side note, we've had this in the plan for three years. We're looking to make this project larger, uh, in compass, uh, to rework of the South Street and Holden Street intersection with the contribution assistance of the university. We were asked to hold up on the project, uh, university at that time, so we take it, allocate funding for the project. This last year, we were told whenever we were getting ready to pull the project, that wasn't gonna be possible. We have readjusted some of the plans, readjusted some of the work that we're gonna do there. Some of those things, without, without getting into the weeds
Right.
Playmate on the top.
That's what I did.
So, uh, here's some of the, the comments of, you know, of why, uh, that, that pretty much we couldn't, couldn't leave the boundary there.
And also because the special funding tied to it goes through MoDOT. This isn't something where the city could go ahead and build it in advance and then come back and argue with them later. We would've jeopardized all of that funding, and we wouldn't have received any of it, and we couldn't afford to absorb the two-hundred-and-twenty, two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars that we were waiting to get.
That's what I...
We have to agree with this, she's...
Right.
That's what I told everybody that reached out to me, it's, it's, it was MoDOT, it's MoDOT-funded, and MoDOT controls it, and MoDOT doesn't care when the kids come back from school.
Not their issue.
Yep.
Sounds good. Um, well, that was mine, miscellaneous matter. Did anybody else in the council have anything?
Nope.
This is a bit redundant, because I know we go around the room again. Okay, city managers report?
I'll keep it brief, we've been here for a while, and we have a closed session still afterwards. So, I just wanna give a, a special thank you to staff. We've recently been undergoing a change in our financial software, updating for version nine, version ten, taking a lot of work. A lot of data entry, we've had several employees that have worked many late hours, trying to help that go off as smoothly as possible. And so, I just wanted to thank our finance and HR staff from, uh, interning my office, who put in a lot of hours over the last couple of weeks. Not only getting the software ready, but helping do the training for employees to use the software and everything else. Even tonight, I came in for the council meeting, and we still have staff member in our office working that usually is pretty prompt, leaving at five o'clock, which I don't blame her. But, anyway, I just wanna say thank you for the staff and, and putting in their dedicated efforts to try to make that go through smoothly. I don't want to make him further.
Matthew?
For July, uh, the month of July, sales tax was up about four percent. We, we're doing really good this year, and it looks like we may have, uh, depended on the next two months, uh, the highest year on, on record, sales tax. We already have the highest year on record for use tax.
Good.
Couldn't you just be consistent?
Yeah, but, if they could be consistent.
Yeah, if you could count on it.
It's very erratic.
Okay. I thought you had her in China.
No, no.
I didn't hear from you. Slim?
Well, we can take phase four off the list.
I was gonna say something about it, too, so...
Glens Road, uh, I can add the fact that we, we are thirsty, uh, planning on having asphalt, whether permitting, uh, having asphalt on our way is not a completion of the project. We have to get the, uh, thermal ditches graded in, uh, on there, and there's lighting that goes on that project, uh, so that keeps the underground condo area and, and some of those things. So, uh, once you see asphalt on there, it's not, not totally completed at that point.
That's the one that's gonna have bike lane, right, right in front of there?
Bike lane low south side.
It's already graded.
Power and oil coat project was completed last week. We did, uh, this year, try a smaller aggregate, instead of the three-eighths, we used a quarter-inch aggregate on there. We wanted to see if it's, uh, less noisy, uh, more accepted by the public, uh, so we're, we're trying it, but, uh...
Same source?
Same source.
Okay.
We, you know, we have, we wanna get our process perfect, we're, you know, to make this work better for us. This week, the projects that we did last year, the power and oil coat, power and oil coat will be sealed, uh, so you'll see some of that work going on, uh, starting tomorrow. Should take them a couple of, two or three days to get that part, that portion completed. And, uh, the signal project, uh, we're waiting, uh, materials, that's got a long run on, uh, components that we're waiting to come in, but, uh, we stand ready to go with that project as soon as we get the equipment here.
All right. Thank you. Randy?
Mummy?
Marcy?
I think it was Sean.
Danielle?
I think it was Sean.
Joe?
Yes, um, the client organization is having their local tour on, uh, Thursday, August thirtieth, and I think it's time for three, three fifty. They have a request out, we can get a couple, uh, city council members to come, anticipate the panel for, uh, the participants to ask questions.
Police Department training room again this year?
The police one is there, and you're welcome to use my training room if you want to.
That's what we did last year, I think. Did all of us attend that once last year? I brought baby C with me.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah.
I remember the baby.
Yeah, the baby.
Okay, so location, yeah, location to be announced. Okay?
What time, what time is that?
Do think in three or three minutes, and I can let you know, like, much based on tomorrow.
Yeah, you might just say this, and I've seen, I mean, that was always fun to...
Lasted twenty or thirty minutes last year.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah, this week, uh, I got the opportunity to attend the Missouri State Society Human Resource Conference. It was three packed days, fourteen great sessions, um, was able to pick up some continuing head credits, uh, but also, um, was able to make contacts with a lot of human resource people, Sedalia, Clinton. And, uh, you know, some of the, from some of the sessions that were, uh, there, I think they've given the topics that, uh, I think the staff would be able to, uh, look at in the near future and, and, uh, you know, have some discussion about, sure, sure, very good conference.
I also attended a conference last week in Dallas, it was, uh, the International Association of Fire Chiefs. Very valuable conference, brought back a lot of good stuff, um, a lot of good contacts and information. And, future, uh, items that we're gonna try in the department, we just don't know yet.
I did not attend the conference last week.
You actually worked, huh?
Ice cream on top at Wendy's. Our, uh, next Wendy's fundraiser for AEDs will be August twenty-third, so if you guys wanna come and eat, uh, all day at Wendy's, breakfast, lunch, dinner. Thirty percent of all the sales will go toward our AED effort. The last one we had, we raised more than eight hundred dollars, so, um, if you don't need a coupon, just come by and say you're, uh, supporting the police, and they will make that designation. If you're in the market for a cat, um, come out on Fridays, we have free cat Fridays, um, all of the month of August. So, um, all you have to do is come out there, they're six months in older, not kittens, just, just older cats. We, uh, we adopted, uh, I think it was, um, nine cats this past Friday in one day, which is a huge success. Fourteen cats for the last week, seven dogs, so, um, we're working on some improvements to our adoption process, and I think that's part of what's helping, is, uh, is doing that, so...
When's that, uh, the, Neil again?
August twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Uh, all day.
It's a busy day.
You said Wendy's?
Wendy's, yes.
It's a busy day.
And they just remodeled and, uh, looks fantastic inside.
No, the joint meeting was Main Streets on the twenty-seventh.
That's the joint meeting with WCBP.
Oh, with WCBP, oh, is that, that is twenty, sorry.
It's the twenty-third.
Four o'clock.
So, we're all gonna come in with Frosties.
Yeah.
I'll have things.
As you mentioned, cats, um, you know, there's a reason why people, why they're called crazy cat ladies. But, the T and R program is, they're still, they're still reaching out to me, they're still talking. So, I know we discussed about maybe getting that back on the agenda to see if it's something we wanted to consider as a program.
Something you want on the next agenda?
Soon would be probably good. If we can fit it on that one, I know we're gonna have a bunch, we're gonna have all this stuff on there again, so...
That's the second meeting September, so you still have...
Do the first one.
First one September.
I didn't really understand it also, I mean, I'm not, I don't think we made a decision decision.
No, we didn't make a decision, we were just taking for information, but they're, but they're now reaching out to say, "Hey, you know, are you, what can we do, are we, what do you need, what can we do, how can we help you?" So...
So, the twenty-third here at four o'clock, correct, for all of us?
Right.
All of us.
Except, yeah, Casey, you can't, I think Casey can.
Yeah, I won't, the twenty, I won't be the twenty-third either.
And you couldn't either, yeah, I just prefer Casey to...
Two last Frosties. Okay, somebody could read the close?
Oh, shoot, I just, somebody got it, I just turned my... Sorry.
He went this far.
I got it, I got it right here.
Vote to close, part of this meeting pursuant to section six-ten dot O-two-one of the revised statutes of Missouri relating to, one, legal actions, causes of litigation, causes of actions or litigation involving the city and any confidential or privileged communication between the city and its representatives and its attorneys. Two, leasing, purchase, or sale of real estate where public knowledge might adversely affect the amount paid in the transaction. Three, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by a public government body when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded. Twelve, documents of any, documents of any documents related to a negotiated contract until the contract is executed or all proposals are rejected. Thirteen, individually identifiable, and individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, did you, I threw it that way, Bob?
Oh, I thought Bob did, okay, anyway, thank you. Marcy's father passed away tonight.
I stand. For just an independent county, I vote for Zillie.
He's one of the ones that wasn't fair. I thought I talked to Jay from here, and he wasn't there either, so he's talking my...
My brother asked me.
He heard what I'm talking about, you know, we didn't hear, we didn't hear. And I said, "There's a couple that are not..." They weren't sure if they were gonna be...
Were you in, um, the way?
When it started, it's a million, so...
I was having a brain, and there was nobody on the line.
The truck I bought you in had a major brain, so I got the brain.
I, I just didn't know, you know, what, what...
It just seemed ridiculous for everybody to have all these brains, you know, one, all, they all look alike, so... You haven't even gotten your dollar bill. You haven't got a dollar bill for most of anything.
And it might have been, then the policy, yeah.
I bet that's what they did. They probably took it out with, had to protect, so then it wasn't even a dollar.
Yeah, that's right.
It got written up, and the auditors said we had to take the actions out of that.
Well, there you go.
So, I bet you didn't even realize, you probably thought it was a kind of steak, and so, okay, I'll take it. Anyway, well, Drew Dyer is really on her toes, she, she asked about that.
Who?
She's really on her toes, if she actually...
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, she's, she's on it.
Okay, well, if you want one, we'll get you one.
That's okay.
All right, well, we'll see what we can do.
Thank you, sir. Oh, you're welcome. I'm slowing up.